Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2020 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow for public comment under Agenda Item 2A. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235235861. You can also join via computer at https://global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, I am Dorian Goodrich, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lionel Berthium? Lionel Berthium is absent. Daniel Carpenter? Daniel Carpenter is absent. Tristan LaLiberty?
Here, sorry, I was muted.
Thank you. Mr. LaLiberty is present. Mr. Wren?
Here.
Mr. Wren is present. Town officials and employees participating. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town manager Julie Jacobson?
Yes.
Assistant Town Manager, CFO Ed Casanovic?
Not tonight, no.
Casanovic is not participating. Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski?
Yes.
Please note that this meeting is also being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. All votes at this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And I do just want to say that Mr. Berthium had informed me that he will be logging on, but he'll be a few minutes late. Mr. Carpenter will be absent. So the first agenda item we have is a public hearing, excuse me, for Feng Restaurant, Inc. Doing Business as Jasmine Asian Cuisine, 7-Eleven, Southridge Street, Auburn, for an all alcohol license, change of offices, director and transfer of stock revoked per the state ABBCC with the additional documents as requested by the ABBCC. When the original application for change of offices and transfer of stock was sent to the ABBCC after the board's approval on October 29, the ABBCC took no action pending the receipt of additional documents that were provided by the applicant and approved by the Board of Selectmen on December 9, 2019, and sent to the ABBCC. Now, the ABBCC is seeking more documents as stated in the investigator's reports. Enclosed is the report and the documents submitted by the applicant. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Still moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion by Mr. Wren and a second by Mr. LaLiberty. Mr. Wren? We have to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The hearing is now open. So is there someone here representing Feng Restaurant, Doing Business as Jasmine?
Yes, May Hui Hu, on behalf of the applicant. And the owner is present as well.
Okay, and who will be speaking?
I will be.
Okay. Could you please give your name for the record and just tell us what the issue is and why you're before us tonight?
Yes, my name is May Hui Hu. I'm an attorney of record for Feng Restaurant, Inc. I think by reading the investigator's report, I could identify that, first of all, there is a organizational issue. I think the investigator would like to see us file an article of amendment to specifically say that the corporation allows setting the number to the Board of Directors to only one, which we have already done, and I think it's submitted again recently to the town licensing department. The second issue, as I could see, is perhaps some missing, some document missing that was previously submitted, which is a copy of the purchase and sale agreement for the transfer, for the stock transfer. I'm not quite sure if the licensing board currently has a copy or should I submit another copy at this time. And then the third issue is perhaps a transmittal form. On previous two occasions, when I came to the Selectmen meeting, the nomination and appointment of a proposed manager was specifically heard and approved, but I'm not quite sure why the investigator report pointed out that that was not voted on. So perhaps this is something that through my end, figure out where the issues are. So those are the three issues. First two, I am confident that they've been resolved. It's just a matter of resubmitting those documents, but I'm not quite sure how to resolve the first issue.
Do board members have questions?
Not through the chair. If I could, maybe this would help. Through the chair, my office reached out to the ABBCC to try to get clarification on this. I agree with the speaker who just said that one of the issues appeared to be that the investigator at the ABBCC that looks at the documents thought the board vote was taken on a name for the stockholder that was different from the name in the articles of incorporation. It's the same name. We double-checked it. We checked with the ABBCC, and what they told us is the board, that they needed to require two documents, which are now in your packet. So that does answer the question. You do have them. You have a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, and you also have a copy of the Articles of Incorporation. These were the two documents that the ABBCC was requiring of the applicant. We asked the ABBCC what the difference would be in the board's vote from the board you originally took, the vote you originally took, to the vote you're taking now. And apparently, the difference being that the board you originally, the board originally took a vote on this application that had some information that was inconsistent that the ABBCC investigator looks at. So it's, first of all, the board doesn't look at any of these things. The board just votes to say that you're okay with the transfer. They then look at all the legal aspects of it. They look at the Articles of Incorporation. They look at the purchase and sale and make sure everything's in place. So my understanding is, from an email we received from the ABBCC, that the board just now needs to take another vote because all the documents that they were requiring have been resubmitted by the applicant. So we hope this will take care of it for the applicant. It was definitely a little confusing. I'm not sure, it appears that there were two investigators at the ABBCC. I'm not sure if there was any kind of difference there between the investigation, but what we heard recently from the ABBCC is the board now needs to take a vote that the information that's in your packet is the information that they are requesting from the applicant.
After hearing that, do board members have any additional questions or comments?
Just a comment, this is exactly as I thought. This is dotting i's and crossing t's. That's it.
Okay. And does the applicant have anything else they want to add before I close the hearing?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
And a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second to close the hearing by a roll call vote. Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Make a motion to approve the change of officer-director in stock transfer with the additional documents as requested by the ABBCC.
Yes, there is. Okay. We have a motion and a second by a roll call vote. Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you so much for being here tonight and for giving us that explanation. You are all set. We'll send this to the ABBCC. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm seeing that we have some town employees on here, so I don't want to keep them waiting, especially, Mr. Coyle, looking ahead at the week, I want you to go home and get some rest before the big storm. So is there a motion to move up Agenda Item 5A, followed by 5C, followed by, 5A and 5C for now?
Moved. I'll make a motion to move up Agenda Items 5A and 5C.
Okay. And it was seconded by Mr. Wren by a roll call vote. Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we are now on Agenda Item 5B, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program. Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, thank you very much. So on Item 5B, I'm going to turn to Bill Coyle, the DPW Director, to explain this. And I just want to say that he and his office have done just a tremendous job of identifying grants that we are potentially qualified for and working on them. And some of these are very complicated grants, and they've just done a terrific job keeping up with it all. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and then, not to worry, Bill, I will take the EMPG grant on the 5C. And then I know we have the fire chief that will be logging in shortly on another grant. So this would be, Bill, I believe this is your only item?
Yes, this is. So thank you, Julie, Madam Chair, members of the board. This grant is called the BRIC Grant. It's a building resilient infrastructure in communities. It's a grant that is administered through MEMA and FEMA. Ultimately, the grant funds are through FEMA. Been working very closely with Joanna Paquin, the sewer superintendent and assistant, a DPW director, and Eilish Corey on this grant. As Julie mentioned, this one's been quite a few hours to put together, but it's an important grant that would allow for the sewer department, in particular, the Pinrock Pump Station and Holstrom Court Pump Station, our two largest pump stations in town. Pinrock handles the entire town and Holstrom Court, about half the town. And both of these generators are probably about 45 years old. And so we are requesting a grant to replace both generators, also to retrofit both pump stations for a quick connect system to allow us to connect the portable pumps that the town already owns to both of these pump stations as sort of a backup to the backup. So currently, they, they both, both stations run off electricity. If we lose power, they then run by generator, which is diesel engines. And so we'd be replacing both those generators. And again, the quick connects would allow for basically a Plan C. If the generators were ever to go down, we could then connect our portable generators to both these pump stations and have a third plan in place. So the grant that we are proposing, it's actually just amend the dollar value when this letter was originally drafted, which, by the way, when we originally drafted the letter, we thought the grant, the deadline was this past Friday, but that deadline was through MEMA for them to review the application. So we're working closely with MEMA as well. The actual deadline to go to FEMA, which would be the, I guess, the ultimate submittal of the application, will be the end of January. So the dollar value is now a total of $460,000, of which $345,000 would be funds through FEMA, and then the town would have a 25% match, which would be $115,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do members have any questions or comments? I'll just say, good job, Bill. That's an impressive grant that you've applied for. And I know a lot of effort goes into these grant applications, so good work once again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion? Agenda Item 5B.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant application. And are we also including to allow them to expend the funds in this, in this motion?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the application, the grant application, for the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, and vote to allow town administration to accept and expend funds.
Is there a second? Second. So by a roll call vote, Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you so much, Bill. Good job.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
That's all you have this evening, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Julie, Agenda Item 5C, Emergency Management Preparedness Grant?
Certainly, I'm happy to do that. And then through the chair, if I can suggest that if, oh, then the chief did log on, so after that...
It was my plan to move up Agenda Item, ask for a motion to move up 4D next. I believe Mrs. Coyle is here for that, and then we'll hear from the chief.
Yes, I was, I was just going to say, thank you. I think both, I think Darlene Coyle, Kayla Moody, and Rachel Pressy all may be here for 4A and 4B, which are the licenses. And then I see the chief just logged on too. So I will, per the board's vote, go to Item C, which is Emergency Management Preparedness Grant. And once again, we're happy to say that we have found out that we're eligible for a competitive grant that pays 50% of our Code Red costs. The other 50% come out of our local cable funds because it's tied in, our emergency management system tied into cable TV and letting the public know when we have an emergency in the outreach. So this would be an amount of $4,600. It is a formula, so it's not a random number. That's the number that we're given by MEMA. So this would be, the $4,600 would pay for roughly half of the cost of Code Red with about another $160 that go into supplies for emergency management, and the remainder coming from cable funds on the match.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve, to authorize, accept, and expend the funds for the Code Red Emergency Notification System.
And there's a second?
Second.
Thank you. By a roll call vote, Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So I will ask that we move up Agenda Item 4D, followed by Agenda Item 5E, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Mr. Wren? Mr. LaLiberty? Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I know this, we have to do every vote, no matter what, by a roll call vote. So we are on the gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, DDIS Animal Control Unit, $1,000 from Home Depot. And I know that Mrs. Coyle is excited to speak about this.
Thank you so much. Good evening, all, and Madam Chair. Very excited to show you this. Hopefully, you can see it all. So very happy to say, approximately about a week or so ago, the animal control officer and I were able to accept this check for $1,000 from Home Depot, the management Keith and Ella over at Auburn Home Depot. And it's a generous check to, to go towards the animal shelter and the supplies that we desperately need, especially this time of year. And in addition to this generous gift that they've donated to us, they have also offered a shed to us, and that shed is actually being built now for, for the purpose of keeping our animal control emergency equipment crates, all of the items, the nets and emergency equipment that animal control needs to have and doesn't always fit in the vehicles. So we have a lot of equipment right now. We have it spaced pretty much everywhere, in the office, in every area that we can stash something. Having this shed that's going to be coming to us, hopefully by the springtime, will allow us to, to keep all the, all the equipment in one place, organized and ready to deploy as needed. So we're very, very excited and really grateful for this, this important donation from them. And I can't, on behalf of our animal control officer, Amy Contoyes, and her team, and myself, we are so thankful for this generous, generous gift.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a motion to accept gratitude?
So moved, I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren? And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so now we're, we've moved up Agenda Item, I believe the chief is on yes. So we have a requi, the fiscal year '21 Fire Safety Equipment Grant Program, and it would be a vote to authorize the application and accept and expend the funds. Chief Coleman, if you could just give us a little update as to what this is?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So the state last year actually resurrected a grant program for safety equipment that hasn't been seen to the fire departments of the Commonwealth in about 20 years. So we're happy that this program has come back. The grant that I am looking to apply for, it's a maximum of $15,000, and the safety equipment that I have selected, you can't just write for anything. They provide a list of what is eligible. And we're looking to expand on our cache of portable radios for interoperability, as well as expanding newly purchased wireless communication sets for the trucks. So we were able to purchase that on the CIP this year, so now all of the vehicles, the larger vehicles anyway, when you get in the vehicle, you put on a headset, and wirelessly you can communicate with everybody in the cab without yelling over engine noise. So we're looking to expand that by another base station and a few more headsets. So I will be writing the grant for the full $15,000. There is no match to this grant, so we would be looking for you to authorize submission and, as the town manager stated, to expend the funds.
Great, thank you. Any members have any questions or comment? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, where are we? This is E, right? Yeah, make a motion to authorize the town administration to accept and expend funds of up to $15,000 for the Fire Better Safety Equipment Grant Program.
Second.
Thank you. By a roll call vote, Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. But chief, while we have you here on the call, do you have a special event coming up this Saturday that you'd like to share a little information on?
We do. And I will send, I will talk about it early, and at 7 o'clock this evening, we actually have a post that's going out on social media just to remind the residents of the community. So this Saturday, December 19, starting at 11:00 a.m., Santa will be making his way around town. We're happy that we're able to do the event this year, even, even with everything that's gone on with COVID and COVID precautions. My team's done a great job of, of making sure that we'll be able to do this event safely. There are a few changes. He won't be making as many stops for some of the personal visits, but we're certainly able to accomplish the mission of getting Santa around town as normal. So like most years, we'll be leaving fire headquarters at 11:00. The route map can be found on our website at auburnmassfire.org. If you click under the Community section, click on the Santa Tour link, and the full map with approximate times for Santa coming around will be there. As I like to say every year, and we'll talk about it in the social media posts leading up to it, those times are all approximate. Obviously, you know, the members who are working the tour, they are all volunteering their time that day. It's a very long day. It's about a 14-hour day for the volunteers. And although they're volunteering their time, a few of the pieces of equipment, they are still, need to be ready to respond for certain types of calls. We've lucked out on most years. There have been a few times where we've had to divert trucks and we've been behind a few hours, but again, those times are approximate. Also, the other thing that I like to mention is, the route map is, is the route. So we, you know, on most years, we get some emails or some phone calls asking if we can come down particular streets. That route map is designed for us to leave the station and essentially make the tour that we make without stopping, without going down dead-end streets, without having to turn around or do three-point turns on streets. These are large vehicles, so the map, you know, the route is actually designed in a way that, that has safety built in, as well as trying to accommodate, you know, as many neighborhoods as we can. Even though we may not go down a particular street, you should be able to just walk to the end of your street and catch Sanaby, you know, coming down the road on a, on a main street. So we're very excited. This will be the 60, I want to say, I'm going to have to double-check, but I want to say this is the 65th year.
Wow.
That we will be doing the Santa Tour. So we're very happy, very proud that we're able to, to keep this tradition alive for the citizens of Auburn.
Well, we thank you and your team for, for your efforts on this, especially during this very difficult year. You know, we've been, we've been fully supportive of the things that need to be done to keep people safe, and this is just going to put a lot of smiles on a lot of people's face, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see members of the board.
Thank you. And so we will go back to our regular agenda. Under three communications, there are none, so we're back on Board of Selectmen general items. And if there are any questions, Mr. Moody and Ms. Pressy are here to answer those questions. First, we have the 2021 liquor license renewals. Enclosed is a list of annual liquor license renewals for 2021. They were reviewed by the Treasurer Collector and DCG. There is a document in your packet from DCG, but I don't believe that in that report there were any issues with any liquor licenses. Do any members have any questions or comments on the liquor licenses? Seeing none, is there, go ahead, Mr. Wren?
I really, just being a first-year guy, actions, do they have to be up-to-date on property taxes? What justification do we have not to renew?
Right, and, and that's why they've gone through DCG to make sure there were no outstanding issues. So, so I believe regarding the liquor licenses, and there is a note from... and there's a note from Rachel that, you know, the inspections have been complete, and there are no objections to the renewals. So is there a motion regarding the liquor license renewals?
I'll make a motion to approve the licenses, license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license are subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall and validate that license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? By a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Computer problem, yes.
And the chair votes yes. We also have the full list of the 2021 regular license renewals, enclosed as a list of annual license renewals for 2021. They were reviewed by the treasurer collector and DCG. We do have comments in our packet that the building inspector has made us aware of, as well as the chief. But I don't believe that these are going to hold up any of the licenses. It's more informational. Do members have any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, is there a motion regarding the annual list?
I'll make a motion to approve the license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license are subject to all the conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shown to validate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second. By a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. And so generally, as routine matter, the board will take a conditional vote. And if there are any outstanding licenses, as long as they come in by December 31, that's number two. Is there a motion?
Make that motion to take conditional vote to approve those licenses, should they come in before the 31st of December 2020 with no outstanding issues.
And there's a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? By a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. So, Mrs. Jacobson, is there, are there any other town employees that have any other agenda items before we move on? Thank you, Rachel and Caleb, for being here for those.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any others that are on the call. Caleb, possibly, I know this would be the fire department on the flammable storage permit, change of address. Those are very simple. So I think, looking at the agenda, that should do it. Rachel may, let's see. Nope, she's all set, and they're all set. They're good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So moving on to Agenda Item C, vote of change of address for flammable storage permit. Enclosed are requests from the town clerk for the change of address information on the following flammable storage permit locations. And there are two of them. Are there any member questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the address changes as presented?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. By a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Moving on, we have, we do have two additional gift acceptance. Let me see if I can find it. I will. It's out of sorts here. Yeah, we had two additional gift acceptance that came in to the fire rescue department from Patricia Champagne, in the amount of $50 for the fire department gift account. And we also have from a patron, Joanne Wiewick Kousky, in the amount of a $25 gift card. The gift card is to Dunkin' Donuts to the library staff in appreciation of their curbside services. Is there a motion to accept these gifts with gratitude?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren? Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. So that is it on gift acceptance. We have no proclamations or recognitions. Under Town Manager Items, we have the transfer of deed of 299 Bryn Mawr Avenue. Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair, thank you very much. I have a memo in your packets that explain this fully. But just to summarize it, we did receive a call from Inabutter to a town-owned parcel, 299 Bryn Mawr, which the town had taken back in 1984 by tax title. And under an annual vote that the town meeting takes every year, town meeting takes the vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and transfer title to any tax title properties. So we did have Inabutter that inquired about purchasing it. And we do have a property disposition policy that we had brought to the board. We adopted it several years ago, I believe it was in '14. And per that policy, we just set out a process for what we do when we get a request. So basically, what we do is, if the parcel is valued at, under, well, at the time of that parcel, excuse me, at the time of the policy, it was a, it had to be valued under $25,000. But statewide has changed, and now it's $35,000. So if it's under $35,000, we can direct negotiate with Inabutter. But what we do is, we notify all the other abutters. So there were three total abutters. We notify them that we're seeking to sell the property. Before we do that, we send the parcel around with all this information to all the department heads and the school department, just to make sure nobody wants the parcel for any reason, whether it be for an easement, or access, or any other use. And, but this parcel is totally unbuildable, very small, no access, no frontage. And there was absolutely no reason the town needed to hold on to it. We would much rather see it go for an accessory use. So we did receive, of the three abutters, two submitted proposals. And the proposal that we went with was, as you can see here, to Sherri and Joseph Ravel, who live at 301 Bryn Mawr. And their proposal was to purchase the property for $2,000. The assessed value was $1,100. They would have to use this as an accessory use, meaning anything that's within the zoning. If they need to get any kind of variance or anything, they would need to go to the ZBA. But it would go on the deed, when it's recorded as a sale, that it's an accessory use. So it can't be used for anything other than accessory use to 301 Bryn Mawr. So we definitely recommend it. We think it's a great use of the property, and it would be nice to have someone taking loving care of a property and putting it back on the tax rolls.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to transfer the deed for parcel 47-054-000, otherwise known as 299 Bryn Mawr Ave., to Sherri and Joseph Ravel, in exchange for $2,000 consideration.
Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, by a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. We did Agenda Item 5C. We did Agenda Item 5C. So we're on Agenda Item 5D, which is a request by the police department to declare surplus equipment in your packet. You have a letter from Sergeant Starkus explaining the request. It is to declare electronic controls weapons, I'm sorry. It's transitioning from the TASER model to the X2 TASER model to TASER 7 model. And they are requesting that the listed equipment of tasers and cartridges be declared surplus. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request to label the included equipment as surplus.
We have a motion and a second. By a roll call, vote, Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. We have taken care of Agenda Items E. So the next is Agenda Item F, Boy Scout Troop 101 and PAC 101 Tire Cleanup. And this is a great story. Mrs. Jacobson?
Yeah, it is. Thank you. We just wanted to give a shout out to Boy Scout Troop 101 and PAC 101, who got together during the warmer weather in October. And went, they were on a hiking trail, actually. They went on the package truck hiking trail. And they noticed that there were some, a lot of trash along the trail that people had unfortunately left. So they took it upon themselves, again, Troop 101 and PAC 101, to clean out that area. And basically, they took 12 tires that had been discarded out of that, out of that hiking trail, out of the package truck trail, and cleaned it up and made it look nice. And they did this all on their own, and we just wanted to thank them and let the public know what a great job these boys have done. You know, it's a great community service. It's a good learning experience for them, and it's great for the town. It's great for the residents to have boy scouts who care about the town and spend their time doing something like this on a Friday afternoon. So we're proud of these kids, and we thank them.
Really? It was a great project. Great job. So we have no tabled items. Do members have any items?
No, I have the open space, and Tristan and I met in regard to the tax classification. I'm not really ready to give an update. Probably in the January meetings, we'll give a more substantive update on those.
Great. So I think, you know, we say, what happened to the year 2020? It's hard to believe that this was likely our last meeting in 2020, unless anything comes up. So I just want to take a minute to wish everyone sincerely a happy holiday season. Mostly a happy, healthy holiday season. Everyone stay safe. We have another year that went by, and really, you know, sincere thanks to town administration and all of the town employees for everything they do all year long. They deserve a little R and R at the holidays, and I hope everyone enjoys time with their families and loved ones, even if it's via Zoom. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On behalf of everybody, we thank all of you. Also, 2020 is, in many ways, a year to forget. And in other ways, you know, looking at the positive side, we've done some great things, and we look forward to continuing in 2021. So hopefully everyone stays healthy. This is an opportunity for us to also say, just a reminder to the public, we know it's difficult. We know we're asking for some sacrifices. But please, please, wear your masks, keep your numbers down of your gatherings. Try to have more Zoom meetings than in-person meetings. Again, we're all experiencing a difficult time not seeing our families, but our numbers are spiking in Auburn. We're in the red again. Surprisingly, we thought we'd be in the red more. Our numbers are very high. In the last week alone, we had about 95 cases. That is just, it's unacceptable. We need to do everything, all of us. This is something we all need to work on if we're gonna get through this. So we're really encouraging people to do the right thing and take every precaution you can, so that we can all safely get together again soon. I would also just, as a reminder, let everybody know that it is cold weather. We understand that. Our kiosk is still open for drive-through service at the kiosk. And our treasure collector's window, it is open. It is, we understand it is chilly to go to the window, but that's not your only choice. Some people do prefer to go to the window and pay in person, but you can pay online. You can mail. You can put in the ducks, or you can go to the kiosk. So we have a lot of options for you. We're also looking into, and have been looking into it for a week or so, as to whether we can enclose that area near the treasure collector's window to try to make it a little bit more protected from the elements. But in the meantime, we have plenty of other options. That is just one additional option that we took on this summer in the better weather. But wanted to just remind people, right now, it's, this is a time to be more restrictive, not less restrictive. So we're not looking to invite people into any of our public buildings when we don't have to. We are still open by appointment only. If anyone needs to come into town hall, we haven't had many takers at all since July. But if someone needs to come in and see us, we will absolutely make arrangements for that until such time that we're no longer able to do that. And unfortunately, that may be soon, if the numbers continue the way they are. Again, we may have to put more restrictions, not less. But right now, as of today, you can call and get an appointment with us at town hall. So it's a good reminder, given that the numbers went up last week, given we're in the red again, and just kind of a heads up to everybody, and we'll let you know, we may have to get more restrictive over the next couple of months. So you may see us cutting back on in-person meetings, but we're able to do everything remotely, and I think we've done a very good job at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have the minutes of the November 9th, 2020 meeting. Do members see any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. Again, happy holidays to all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn for the final roll call vote of the year. Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Happy holidays.
Good night. You too. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sharon.
Bye.